Call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all of those who have passed away in our community, especially former DPW employee Tim Suppek, who passed away last Thursday. We ask that you keep his family and your thoughts and prayers during this difficult time.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Downey?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, agenda for city planning commission meeting held January 24, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3B, agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting to be held February 14, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time? I have one announcement. This is the last week that DPW crews will collect Christmas trees that are left at the curb. They should not be in bags as they will be recycled, so if you do still have your Christmas tree up, this will be the last week for collection.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident and taxpayer. And now you know that it's been 305 days since you passed legislation granting Knoll's Insurance Company the insurance contract for this city for the next three years. And you passed that legislation knowing that the insurance list that they provided with that legislation had problems. There were properties on that list, like the Scranton Public Library, which should not have been there. And there were questions about the dollar figures associated with some of the vehicles and/or properties that were being insured. And you, Mr. Evans, made the statement that it was going to be circulated for corrections and updating so that all the vehicles were listed, all the properties were listed properly, and that once that was done, it would be shared with the public. Okay? So, yeah, in caucus tonight, we discussed, you discussed it again, and basically, there's a question about whether or not the updated list is a public document or not, and it's gonna have to go through a right-to-know request. And Lori has very kindly offered to do that, so I don't have to submit one. But I gotta tell ya, this stinks on so many levels. This is like the ghost of the Scranton Sewer Authority comes back to life, you know. Ahhh, there they are, okay? Can't share those invoices, you know they have public information, you won't want to share those figures, and here we go again. You know, a lot of my personal financial information and the information on other taxpayers is out there for God and country to see, okay? You wanna know what I paid for my apartment, it's on the county's website. You wanna know what my property's assessed for, it's on the website. You wanna know whether I paid my taxes or not? Check the city and county websites. A lot of information is out there for me, and I can't hide it, okay? People get a sensing of my financial status by looking at that data, just like we get a sense of the city's financial assets by looking at that data, okay? So if I'm gonna be hanging out there in the wind and every other taxpayer's gonna be hanging out in the wind, that kind of information just should automatically be releasable to the general public without a right-to-know request. And if it comes back next week that the copy that I get to see has redacted figures, I will not be a happy camper, 'cause I don't get to redact my information, nor do you. So, 305 days and counting, so I hope that the city is more forthcoming in full disclosure if information affects taxpayers. Speaking of full disclosure, I hope we're making progress on the Arcadis Stormwater Study, the one that we thought would be completed last November. Anybody have any updates on that? If you would share that with us? Nothing yet? 'Cause that's gonna have a big impact on taxpayers throughout the city. And I see the ghost of the future stormwater fee lingering in the shadows there, but we gotta see what's gonna happen there. And speaking of the city's finances, is any progress on or information that can be shared with the lowly taxpayers on a Plan B in case one or more of the pending lawsuits go against the city? And I will say one thing, though. I was pleasantly surprised to see ABM quickly repair all those parking meters. I think you gave them a good swift kick in the pants, which was much needed. So I thank you, and I thank ABM. And I will listen to your comments and later in the meeting, see any of the comments I have made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. It's been a little bit since I've been here, but it's good to be back. Can I approach council?
Sure.
Well, as everyone who's watched these meetings for the past number of years knows, I've been asking for dangerous dog legislation. What I gave you was stuff I printed out over the past several years about how to pass an ordinance and this and that, and maybe it'll help educate you on how to pass an ordinance, since other areas have done it. As everyone else knows, I'm totally against pit bulls, and I've been told we can't be breed-specific, but other areas are breed-specific, so I think precedents have been set. Channel 16 did a story last week about pit bull attacks and dangerous dogs. In 2017, 29 people were killed by pit bulls. 29 people killed. And a lady argued, oh, any dog can bite, any breed. Sure, any breed can dog, can fight, I'm sorry. Any breed can fight or bite, but no breed has ever killed 29 people in one year, as pit bulls did last year. A Chihuahua can bite ya, but they're not gonna kill ya. So I think something has to be done, and I hope with a new person at council and starting a new year, I hope something could be done. Enough on that subject. The last meeting of last year, Mr. Spragley was speaking, and he said the council didn't do anything to help the people of Scranton, and Mr. Wexler took issue with that. I think what Andy meant was, I can't speak for him, that council didn't do everything to help everyone in this city. Councilman Wexler said, yeah, we've helped people, but, yep, I think what he meant was they helped people here and there, but like Andy said, everyone in the city wasn't helped. We still pay an outrageous illegal garbage fee of $300. The parking deal was a disaster. Mr. Bassaliga got a parking garage for a dollar, and then we're gonna have to pay to park in his garage when he got a garage for a dollar? I think that's what Andy meant, that those things don't help the people in this city. And I hope this council looks into doing something to help the people in this city. And I think number one should be to get rid of that garbage fee. As I've said for years, our property tax is already paid for that, so we're being taxed double to get our garbage picked up. Lastly, I am big on these streets the way they are at Scranton also. Councilman Rogan, you're probably familiar with what I'm gonna say. South 10th Avenue from St. Lucie's to Luzerne Street is a disaster. They were dug up by I don't know what utility, the length of the street from St. Lucie's passing over in Brito's Pool to Luzerne Street. I know they can't do anything now, it's not the right weather, but hopefully in the spring, that street will all be repaved by utilities. I hope the city doesn't pay for that, 'cause...
They will be. Any streets, and I will say the one thing the utilities are good at is when it gets to the end of the job, finally paving it, but the problem is it takes so long. And they're sitting, my biggest gripe is that they're sitting this way through the winter season. When they know they're not gonna be working in the winter, the paving should take place prior to the asphalt plants closing in the fall. We are having a caucus next week regarding some utility work in South Side, and then I know Councilman Evans brought up possibly having a follow-up meeting on a more broad utility issue citywide, so it is something we're all very well aware of.
I think these utilities, et cetera, should be cracked down. Last week, I door this street, I live in that area. The water company, I don't know if there was a water main break or what, they dug a huge hole, they filled it in, now there's a depression. They didn't fill enough in, now it's sinking. Cars are gonna get a flat tire or whatever. They just don't do a good job fixing what they break. All right, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Lee Morgan. You know, last week I came to council and talked about the university and other nonprofits and how they should pay for fire and police protection because of the massive assets they probably have. And I don't know if the council's gonna do anything about that or look into and research the amount of assets they actually have, because I don't think you have the backbone for it, to be honest with you, and I don't think neither does the mayor. But, you know, today I decided I'd shift gears a little bit, because anybody can talk about being a leader, and anybody can talk about the vote count, but what really matters is what you do when you sit in that seat. And your performance there, I don't know, you know, I don't wanna be disrespectful, but you could put a primate in those seats and get the same results that we've got from our city government. But you know, to shift the gear, maybe it's time for city government to ask the state to come in and take the Scranton School District. And why is that? Well, they have a 29% dropout rate, and they're 42nd of the 50th worst school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. And my question is, does this council or this administration have an obligation to the children who live in this city to make sure that they get a education of any kind? Or are we worried about the dividing lines between serfdoms? That's the real question here, and I think that's a real hard question to look at. The other thing is, I think that there should be requests by the city of Scranton for investigations of what occurred with the Scranton School District's money over a very long period of time. Construction of the new school and many other things. Because somebody has an obligation to the residents of this city to protect them from the massive tax increase that's coming. You know, it's easy to put your name on the ballot and run for a seat, but you know, there comes a time when you call yourself a leader, that you have to actually become one. And if we don't care about the 29% dropout rate and the $13,000 for every student in the Scranton School District, and we don't care that they're 42nd, do we care about the average taxpayer in this city? That's a really great question to ask. I mean, looking at the performance of the city itself over a long period of time, like I think I said last week, and if not last week, numerous other times here, the city has wasted just unlikely amounts of money. Street signs you can't see anymore, they're faded. We're gonna build a splash park over there on West Side because it's the easiest way to dump federal money around and just waste it, or abandoning the South Side Sports Complex and allowing a multi-billion-dollar corporation to take it. These are the things that the residents in the city of Scranton have become accustomed to over a very long period of time, but it's not leadership. I don't know what you wanna call it. But the question here today is, are the children in this community worth anything at all to the people who've won elective office and say that they're leaders? That's a real question that really needs to be looked at. And should the residents of this city be shielded from the massive tax increases that are coming from the Scranton School District? And should the students possibly be shielded by the state who might come in here and actually put some teachers back in the classrooms? So you know, today, when you decided you were coming to the council meeting because you were elected and you dressed the way you did, as professionals allegedly, and leaders in the community, maybe it's time to really consider what kind of person you are and what kind of leader you are. Because if you aren't willing to shield the residents of this city from any more overtaxation, because it's not like you've done a stellar job yourself, you're in court getting ready to lose quite a few cases, and the harm to the residents is gonna be massive. But don't you think you have an obligation to the children in this community to shield them since they don't have the ability to vote, and they don't have anybody in the conduits of power to request an investigation or to take the Scranton School District and redirect it and lead it somewhere else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, members of council. First, I want to thank you for your continuous efforts to improve Scranton.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you state your name for the record?
Absolutely. My name's Samantha Maloney, and I'm a resident of Scranton. And thank you for this opportunity to address council. I provided you with a copy of my statement today with references, and additionally, I provided you with another copy of the resolution that I'm asking you to consider. As I mentioned at the end of last year, this resolution is part of a statewide, nonpartisan campaign led by fair districts of PA, the League of Women Voters, the PA Council of Churches, and other nonpartisan groups. Just as a brief recap from last year, PA legislators draw their own districts without any oversight or standards to fairness. This gerrymandering is not new and has been practiced for decades by both parties. However, it's grown far worse in recent years due to new mapping and data mining technologies. These allow the parties to predict their district outcomes with greater precision, and thus they draw the borders to protect their control, maximize their influence, minimize their accountability, and keep their seats in office secure. It's called packing and stacking. Furthermore, Pennsylvania has the distinction of being cited in the national press as one of the three worst gerrymandered states. In five different widely-used mathematical methods to determine partisan gerrymandering, PA was the only state to rank among the top five in all categories. Since I was here last, two newsworthy events have occurred. First, as you know, Scranton is divided in half, having two different state reps. Both now have co-sponsored HB 722. Second, the Supreme Court has found, I'm sorry, the state Supreme Court has found that the map, in fact, has been gerrymandered, that it clearly, plainly, and papally violates the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And although the Supreme Court has ordered that the map to be redrawn, the ones drawing the maps are still the party leaders. The party leaders on both sides rely on gerrymandering to protect their incumbents. This process is, and I quote, "still operation-driven." It's still backroom deals and big data with highly secretive maps. Furthermore, and again, I quote, "Many insiders on the left have planned on using their Supreme Court majority to take the reins in the next round of redistricting under the current system, and in effect, had hoped to gerrymander the districts back to the Democrats' favor, even at the expense of geographical common sense." See, gerrymandering is used and will continue to be used unfairly by both parties unless the process is changed. Republicans will lose their voice in a district so packed with Democrats and vice versa. Voters completely lose in the process. So how do we change the process? As previously mentioned, Senate Bill 22 was co-sponsored in a bipartisan effort by a Democrat and a Republican, and is currently co-sponsored by 16 state senators, including Senator Blake. House Bill 722 is likewise has bipartisan support and is co-sponsored now by 102 House members. That is the majority of our state reps and more than any other bill in session, and there are over 2,000 bills. This proposed legislation is similar to other successful state redistricting plans across the nation, and it seeks to establish an 11-member independent citizens' commission. Independent means that no current or recent elected official, candidate, political party officials, or their aides or spouses would be eligible. NEPA, registered voter, that meets the independent criteria can apply to be part of the commission. Transparent means that the commission will establish transparent procedures, follow a strict timetable, and provide the meaningful opportunity for public input prior to the drawing of plans and again before adopting a final plan. All information would be available on a publicly accessible website. Impartial and ethically bound means that when developing these new district boundaries, the commission would not be allowed to consider prior election results, the party's affiliation of registered, I'm sorry, prior election, the party's affiliation of registered voters, or the addresses of incumbents or any other individuals. Passing HB 722 and SB 22 can change the system of backroom secretive maps into a fair, transparent system. As Fair District PA Chair states, "The system is allowing the leadership in both parties to ignore you. A person is not going to solve this for you. It's fixing the system." Council, you can help change the process. You can give your constituents a voice. The resolution that I provided you is drafted by fair districts, and each resolution gives our legislators more evidence that we want the system changed, we want it fixed. So far, more than 173 county, city, municipal governing bodies have passed resolutions in support of these bills. Additionally, the Greater Scranton Chamber of Congress has called for support of the bills. Also, five of our neighbors in Lockawanna County have passed this resolution. These communities are Dunmore, South Abington, Benton, Vandaling, and Waverly. So I'm asking council that you join your constituents and please consider passing the fair districts resolution in support of a fair, fully transparent, and impartial process of redistricting. Help make every vote count. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you.
If you have any questions, please feel free to call or email me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. Third time at bat, Mr. Evans, do you have the workers' comp numbers for me tonight?
No, I don't. I didn't receive them yet from the administration.
Guess I struck out. Okay. Moving right along, this is small, but it may make a difference. 5B, when I read it, first of all, we're on line three, I believe that the "and" should be "A-N," and the "D" should be dropped for it to make sense. Also, I believe that "H" is as clear as mud. How can there be remaining units when no unit has been specified to start with? I think that is a terrible definition, and that's on 5B. So I think that needs more work before you vote on it. And now moving along to 7D. I was really troubled by the, for a number of reasons, by the article in today's paper. Back when this was submitted for your approval to request the grant, I believe I asked how the drug treatment would be paid for, particularly, and this was last year, since everybody was forced to have medical insurance because of Obamacare. And now how comes the biggest change in this whole thing? Now it turns out, this grant is going to pay for it, for at least six. If you have $6,000 of treatment and you have $40,000 to spend in administrative costs, this program is gonna last for six people. Or are we going to end up paying, we, the taxpayers, gonna get hit for the treatment? There are no, the definitions are lacking in this. What, for instance, is a low-level offense specifically? And what are the others suffering from opioid addictions? What is in the contract for recovery? What is the treatment gap? What is a minor criminal act? Where and under? Are we going to have to add more people? Because it says here, "We are going to follow these people after they've done their treatment." So how many people are we gonna have to hire to follow these people? This is just very loaded, and I just can't help but wonder what's next. Are we gonna follow Philadelphia and provide safe havens where people can inject drugs?
No, these are absolutely not comparable.
And second, my time, my five minutes, Mr. Rogan, thank you. And also, how, again, are we going to pay for this? And what message is this sending to those people who are not addicts? And we keep talking about opioids and heroin, like that's the big problem. Could we please split between what drugs, who are overdosing because of fentanyl, and who are overdosing because of heroin? We're blaming heroin, and yet fentanyl's coming into the country like crazy. I'd like a split on those deaths that are due to fentanyl and those deaths that are due to heroin. And then finally, moving on to stormwater. Yesterday's photo, Something Should Be Done in the Paper, was down on, you probably saw it, on Franklin Avenue, saying the absence of storm drains forces pedestrians to walk in the street. Well, let me tell ya, I would really like to know, and I'm asking this for a number, how many blocks of this city, particularly those on the hills, are, have storm drains? Seymour Avenue was a mess, even those that have them. And this again, Bill, do you still have the public works?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to know about, it's been about 12 years since East Mountain Road was redone and paved from top to bottom. On the west side were combined storm drains, the sanitary sewage, sewage and water, storm water combined, goes down that one. On the east side is stormwater. Now, I would like to know what is happening? There's a tremendous runoff, in good weather and bad, from what appears to be Waldorf. May I finish?
Yes.
From Waldorf Park. In the summertime, you get yards of grit that washes down. Now you get ice from almost that, where it comes down from the hill and almost down to Wintermantle Avenue. Seymour Avenue, a mess, every intersection. And complicating things, we're gonna go stormwater, you're getting this big thing. One of the things that clogs those drains, those pipes, is the grit that we put down in the, on the streets. And I think if you look at stuff, it's recommended that those streets be swept every week. East Mountain is loaded, Seymour Avenue, East Mountain Road, loaded with that grit. And I'll bet you, if it's like last year, we'll see our first street sweeper in July. Now, I'll tell you where that grit's gonna end up.
Thank you.
It's gonna end up in the drains. It's time to take some action. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, 5A, motions.
Mr. Perry, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick comments to make. First, I want to thank, I think this was brought up, ABM for their quick response after... our meeting last night, for getting the meters taken care of. It was a heartache on a lot of businesses and people that use our downtown, so thank you for getting that taken care of. Hopefully, lessons learned, and that doesn't happen again. If there's any issues with meters, they definitely don't get bagged and tagged for not parking. I don't think anybody here agreed with that. Mr. Reed, I have a request for the police station about Olive Street, a crossing, a crossing, crossing path. It was brought to my attention from people that use the Lackawanna River Trail, a lot of the running groups down there. Every spot across the way has a nice marked crossway, but actually going from the parking lot to the beginning of the trail on Olive Street. And there has been some minor issues in the past of runners getting hit with cars, and as was explained to me, cars will do a courtesy stop for people when they're crossing the street there, but it doesn't always happen. So it does become a little bit of a dangerous situation. So if we can just do, get that off to the police station so we can see if we can take that, get that taken care of. I'll touch on the Knowles Insurance Report, because we brought that up in caucus today, it was brought up today. I think I speak for everybody on this board, we're, you know, we're all in agreeance that this information should be let out. What the issue is, is the proper procedure for getting that information out. We're not the ones that make that policy on how that information's released. It was given to us, but we're not the ones that are able to release it unless we're told it's public information. Unfortunately, it wasn't. We did get it released with legislation last March, but once it becomes part of the legislation, it has become public argument. So are we splitting hairs here? Probably. Do we all agree this should be released? Yes. But as Ms. Honowans has mentioned, Ms. Reed is going to put in a Right to Know Act, and we hope to have that information released as soon as next meeting. We're hoping it's a five-day turnaround, and it's done and it's over with. We all want this just put ahead, put behind us. I don't think we should be talking about this anymore. It's just, we should all have this out. But unfortunately, it's just, it's a procedural issue right now. It's nothing to do with any one of our opinions on having it released or not. And you know, that's it. That's all I have today. We talked about the ABM, thank you, the Knowles Insurance Report, and then if we can get that crossingway looked at on Olive Street. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yes. First, I'd like to just echo what Mr. Perry said, that, you know, we'd like to get that information out as quickly as possible. Secondly, on what Mrs. Maloney spoke to about the gerrymandering resolution, I'm one hundred percent in support of us passing a resolution to Senate Bill 22, in support of Senate Bill 22 and House Bill 722. And my hope is hopefully that maybe we'd be able to get that on the agenda for next week. This is an extremely important issue on how our system of government functions. Voters should pick their representatives. Representatives shouldn't be picking their voters. And, I mean, I personally believe that the continuous, continuing dysfunction in Washington is the direct result of gerrymandering across the country. Representatives pander to the extreme fringes of the respective parties instead of where the majority of people are, which is right in the middle. And then, although, you know, the PA Supreme Court just, you know, recently ordered the redrawing of congressional districts, that only corrects a previous wrong, and it's going to require a legislative fix to fix this issue moving forward. In caucus tonight, we had Chief Graziano, and I would just like to publicly, publicly just commend him on his leadership of the Police Department. And another thing we talked about in caucus was possibly, I've been going back and forth with a few school board members about the possibility of setting up some sort of working group committee to explore areas where the city and the district could share services. Me personally, I'm fully aware of the financial issues of the school district. I mean, I spent two years on the board warning about their deteriorating situation. But when my term was up in 2015, I wasn't very confident that the board would be able to sufficiently address their issues. But although they have a steep hill to climb moving forward, I believe the combination of new board members and some logical-thinking former members sort of creates a situation where we could maybe start to work together to find some savings. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Mr. Evans, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. Tonight, I'm going to talk briefly about a very important topic, one that is integral to the lifeblood of a community. In fact, this is a subject that in many ways defines a community, and how we treat this issue says a lot about who we are as citizens of a free society. That topic is the arts. There's been a lot of noise lately about the arts in our community. I want to be clear, reinforce my opinion on this matter. I have always been and always will be a supporter of the arts. I have the utmost respect for the creative class, and we all should, in our own way, appreciate the talents and sacrifices of those who have made the arts their calling. One of the most visionary moments in the history of Lackawanna County government occurred when the county established a modest arts and culture tax. While I'm never a fan of any new tax, this one not only created a sustainable recurring fund for great institutions like the Everhart Museum, the Lackawanna County Library System, and the Scranton Cultural Center, it also created funding to promote and assist hundreds of artists throughout our community. Additionally, it has generated significant economic and cultural growth in Scranton and throughout Lackawanna County. The mission statement of the Lackawanna County Office of Arts and Culture reads in part that they will advocate and support high-quality arts opportunities and programs for people of all ages throughout Lackawanna County. The office provides services and grants for artists and art organizations throughout our region. After more than a decade, they have been providing these services. I have one word for the work of the Lackawanna County Office of Arts and Culture: Bravo. And finally, the arts should always transcend politics. I would like to read two quotes about the arts to reinforce that belief. The first, from John F. Kennedy, who said, "If artists enurge the roots of our culture, society must set the artist free to follow his vision wherever it takes him." And the second quote is from Ronald Reagan, who said, "In an atmosphere of liberty, artists and patrons are free to think the unthinkable and create the audacious. They are free to make both horrendous mistakes and glorious celebrations. I think thee both would have agreed, where there is freedom, art succeeds." That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to place a resolution in support of a citizens' commission for legislative and congressional redistricting on the agenda for next week.
I could second that. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I am going to be supporting this next week, and I agree with Mrs. Maloney and others who have also passionately supported it tonight and in the past. I do think that gerrymandering is a political weapon to maintain political power at the expense of voters throughout the state. And I think in the interest of fairness and transparency, that should end, so I will be supporting that.
On the question, my question is more procedural. Would we require that to be on the agenda as a resolution, or is this something we could just make, have a motion made and then vote it up or down? I'm not sure if Amel, you could touch on that, or what your thoughts are.
Well, we can, there's certainly nothing wrong with a written resolution, but I think a voiced vote on a motion would, you know, also be appropriate. So it's, I guess, the discretion of the board, the council.
What's your motion, Mr. Gahn?
Yeah, the resolution is already, has already been written up, but I don't know if, we probably wouldn't want to make any changes to it. I think just to be proper, it should probably be voted on.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, a written resolution's fine, and you'd have to vote on it, obviously.
Mm-hmm. All right. I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it was a matter of procedure, because it's not our resolution, it's obviously a resolution that was written for us, but if we put it on, it becomes our resolution.
So just to be clear, the motion is to vote on the motion, vote on that resolution next week?
Yeah. Place it on the agenda.
Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, no, I'm in favor for that. That'll give us some time. We'll take a look at it. And again, gerrymandering at its root is, as we all said and know, it's just, it's political manipulation. And it has been used for that by whoever's in office, whether it's Republican or whether it's a Democrat. That's, it's, that's just, I mean, you look at, and I'm sure you're very familiar with it, you look at the state map or any state map from time after time after time, it just changes by how they want it to change, based on data. And the more data that you have, which is, right now, pretty much everything that you could have at your fingertips, it's pretty much can be manipulated right down to the street on where they want. So yeah, no, I have no problem putting that on, and that'll give us a week to take a look at it, and we can vote on it next week.
On the issue, obviously, I'll just, I'll have more comments on the materials next week. I don't have a problem giving it a vote. Just like to remind, all the councilmen, any type of motions should be given to the members in advance, though, prior to the meeting, if possible. Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Thank you. Just to follow up on what Councilman Donahue said about working together with the school district. As the chairperson of the Subcommittee on Intergovernmental Relations, I am very much looking forward to being a part of a city-school district shared services committee. I also think we should eventually include the county. I think a joint legislative committee on government consolidation and shared services is not only a good idea but a necessity, especially in light of the condition of the Scranton School District. As the school district goes, so goes the city. So any areas that we can meet together on, work together, and collaborate is a good thing. We need to look within ourselves as a city, into our neighbors, to share, partner, and collaborate to better meet citizens' needs and make progress towards the future. Sharing services and collaboration is sometimes met with suspicion and resistance, the "that's the way we've always done it" attitude. We need to make sure to look past this and recognize the opportunities that are present. Municipalities across the state and across the country are sharing services to deal with lagging revenue and fewer resources. Sharing services allows local governments and school districts to decrease both the cost and the complexity of the services they provide to their constituents while providing a higher level of service overall. I believe that it's time that we explore innovative ways to control costs by eliminating duplicative services. And we should also seriously explore providing services at a regional level. Some of the areas in which we can work together are through administrative functions, joint procurement of professional engineering services is one example. It will allow us improved purchasing power if we work together with the school district, legal counsel, sharing legal counsel, health insurance, general operations, IT functions, public safety, stormwater issues with the city and the county. One of the examples of intergovernmental cooperation that we've been a part of over the last few years is the land bank, a great example. Almost fifty properties so far have gone through the land bank, and they've been put back on the tax rolls. Another example of working together with the municipalities and boroughs around the county is SAPA, the Scranton-Abington Planning Association. That's also been successful. So I think that we should use the great challenges that face the city and the school district and the county as an opportunity through this committee to work together towards the common goal of ensuring our stability into the future while lessening the financial burden of our citizens. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just two quick items. I guess one of the benefits of being president is everything that, mostly everything that needed to be said was said, but I do want to thank ABM again for their quick work on getting those meters back up, up and running for our downtown business district. I think last week, every council member addressed that issue, and it shows that, you know, you get something, you get public attention on something and things get done. So I'm very happy to hear about that. Couple of comments, and it is an agenda item, but I'll bring it up now, is the alternative to arrest community policing legislation. And one comment that was made that kind of bothered me in reference comparing this program to what Philadelphia is doing. For those who don't know, Philadelphia is considering allowing safe zones where people who are addicted to drugs can go and do their drugs in a safe manner. This is the exact opposite of that program, where instead of encouraging people to continue to use drugs, it's encouraging them to seek help, to go into rehab, to better themselves. But to do that by giving them a second chance. Not every person who is arrested for a minor drug issue deserves to be in jail. Many people deserve a second chance. We've all had second chances throughout life. I am proud to support this program, and I really think Scranton has a number of great departments, but one of our best is our Police Department, and Chief Graziano does an amazing job at looking at programs like this that many other police departments aren't even looking at. This is something that's innovative, that can help the community. And if you think addiction doesn't touch you, it does. There's countless stories every day of people who are affected by opioid addiction. There's also a crime component. Somebody who is addicted to drugs needs to fund their habit, whether that's through property crimes, whether that's through more serious crimes. But the cure to this problem is by, you know, programs like this. And if they work and they're successful, it's something I think we can expand and really make it into something that could be a national model for other cities to follow. So I do want to thank Chief Graziano for that, for coming in and explaining this to us once again, and I'd be very happy to vote yes on this program. I did mention property crime. I forgot to mention this earlier. If we can't send a letter to the Police Department, I have been in touch, I have heard from a number of residents, a couple of people in South Scranton, that there were burglaries again to steal copper out of homes. This was a big problem a number of years ago, when the price of metals was much higher. It did seem to dissipate as the price of copper and other metals dropped, but we're seeing it once again in vacant homes and homes that are under renovation projects. So if anyone was watching, if you could keep an eye on your neighbors, and just so our Police Department knows that this is something that unfortunately is rearing its head again. And that is all. Thank you.
Five B for introduction and ordinance, amending file of the Council Number 58, 2016, as amended, entitled, "Establishing a Registration Program for Residential Rental Properties, Requiring All Owners of Residential Rental Properties to Designate a Property Manager for Service of Process and Prescribing Duties of Owners, Property Managers, and Occupants by Amending Section Three Definitions Tenant to Add a Definition Under the Letter H."
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? On the question, this is a very small amendment to the rental registration program. Actually, there was, in last year's version, there was a difference in interpretation between what council passed and what the administration enforced. And the purpose of this correction is to ensure that people who own a property, say they own a duplex and they rent out the other half, that they're not being assessed a rental registration, which was never the intent of this ordinance, to go after homeowners. But there were some discrepancies on interpretation. So this will clear that up, and so if you are out there and you own a two-unit property, you live in one unit, rent out the other, both units will be exempt from the rental On the question, anybody else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five C for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Robert Timlin, 325 Warren Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18508, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority for an additional five-year term. Mr. Timlin's prior term expired on February 14, 2017, and was held over to January 16, 2018. Mr. Timlin's new term will be effective January 16, 2018, and will expire on February 14, 2022.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I served on the authority with Mr. Timlin a couple of years ago, and he's definitely an asset to that authority, and I'm sure they welcome him back.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five D for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Joseph Wexler, 1315 Cronky Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18505, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Parking Authority effective January 19, 2018. Mr. Wexler will be replacing Maureen McNichols, who resigned effective February 1, 2017. Mr. Wexler will fulfill the unexpired term of Mrs. McNichols, whose term is scheduled to expire on June 1, 2020.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? I'd just like to congratulate Mr. Wexler for this appointment. I know four of us have I know four of us had the privilege of serving with him on council, and as he said at one of his last meetings, that he will continue to serve the community, it didn't take him long to get involved in another endeavor, so we wish him the best of luck.
On the question, I'm glad to see former Councilman Wexler back in the fold, he'll do a great job with the parking authority, it only took him 28 days to get back, so that's good news. And very happy to see he's willing to serve the public once again.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the Council Number 1, 2018, and ordinance creating and establishing special city account number as noted, entitled, "Contract for Recovery Program for the Receipt and Distribution of Grant Funds from NIBA Healthcare Foundation and Any and All Additional Grant Funds Applied for and Received That Would Allow the Scranton Police Department to Implement an Effective Program in the Prevention and Response to Drug Overdose Deaths."
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A, what is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6A past reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 4, 2018, accepting a $1,000 donation from Mr. and Mrs. John Burns, presented to the City of Scranton Police Department.
What is the recommendation for the Chair for the Committee on Public Safety?
As Chair for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 5, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of $1 million, and accepting and dispersing the grant and coordinate the use of the grant funds with Scranton Sheri LP for the project to be named the Scranton Counseling Center.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wex, Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 6, 2018, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton Police Department for a law enforcement activities grant by the Governor's Budget Office for grant funds to convert the Sorrento Memorial Army Reserve Center, 1801 Pine Street, into an emergency services center to be used by the Scranton Police and Fire Departments, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant and disperse the grant funds in the amount of $175,000 to convert the Sorrento Memorial Reserve Center to an emergency services center.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Public Safety?
As Chair for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, just on the question, Chief Graziano was in our caucus today, and I believe Mr. Evans is the one that brought this up. This project is still, we're still committed to having this being grant-fed. I know there was some questions on whether this was going to come from our general fund or we're gonna have to move budgetary money to keep the Sorrento building up and running, but as of right now, all monies that we're using for any kind of upgrades have been coming through, through federal grants. Also was brought up by Mr. Evans, was we're still on track with the, we're gonna sell the building, the property on Ash Street, which is now being used as our training facility. Once we have Sorrento building up and running and we get everything out of there in that property, what we would like to do, and Chief is not against this, is putting that money aside to use on reoccurring costs that the Sorrento building will generate as far as utilities.
On the question, I have provided objections to this project before when we voted on it, so I'll be voting against this tonight just for the simple fact that I don't think that we should be converting the Reserve Center to an emergency services center for the pure fact that it's gonna add additional stress, maintenance, especially maintenance stress on future budgets moving forward. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
No.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 7, 2018, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton Police Department to the Northeastern Pennsylvania Healthcare Foundation for Grant Funds for the Contract for Recovery Alternative to Arresting Addicts Program, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant and disperse the grant funds in the amount of $40,000 for the Contract for Recovery Alternative to Arresting Addicts Program.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As Chair for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7D.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7D legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.